Call this meeting in Parkersburg City Council's order. Madam Kirk, the real call please.
Mr. McCrady?
Yes.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Present.
Ms. Tuck?
Here.
Mr. Huffman?
Present.
Mr. Rexrode?
Here.
Mr. Wolkowski?
Here.
Ms. Daley?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
President. City Council of Parkersburg conducts its legislative meetings using Robert's Rules of Order. This city council by properly noticed and public food recently revised the meeting rules related to the public comment portion. These changes include topic based limitations and an extended time of four minutes per speaker for comments on legislative matters. These matters being germane to the meeting's agenda. City council has always conducted its meetings in a manner that encourages respectful communication, absent of disruption, and encourage civil and appropriate discourse. The purpose of our meetings is to conduct the legislative business of the city, including appropriations and legislative to operate the city and to provide services. As city council president, I have the responsibility to conduct meetings in a manner that is within these guidelines. As we proceed this evening, I would like to be sure the speakers, councilors, and attendees conduct themselves with respect for all. Please keep your comments germane to tonight's agenda, and please adopt a line by the time limit afforded to each speaker. And for those in attendance, this council asks for no cheering or applause and no disruptive noises. We appreciate your attention in this matter. The minutes have been presented to you, councilor. Any changes or corrections, revisions? Hearing none, minutes. Ms. Tuck?
I apologize, I wasn't having any peepses cooking up. There is a correction in the April eighth minutes. It states on the second page, Mary Go, continue to speak about people wanting change longer than the four minute limit. She did not speak longer than four minutes. I think she was asked to take her seat because she was speaking on agenda number five, but it did not go past the four minutes. I think you all rest before the four minutes were up, but she, the time limit was correct. I think if we take out the phrase that says, Mary Go, continue to speak about people wanting change, period.
Is this the last meeting?
That was the April eighth. We didn't.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
So you're making a motion to amend the minutes for that meeting?
Yes, for April eighth. And I think if we just take out, because she continued to speak about people wanting change, but just period, period, and then made a comment on the four minute limit.
Mr. Myers, do we need a second for her motion to amend the minutes for April eighth?
I would think so, yeah.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second? Are there any questions from council regarding Ms. Tuck's motion? Hearing none, can we get the note, please?
Mr. McCrady?
Yes.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck? Yes. Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, motion passed. Second, do we have any reports from standing or special committees tonight?
Mr. President.
Ms. Cool?
On April thirtieth, the Personnel Committee meeting, members met. Everything that was discussed in the meeting is now on the agenda for tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else reports from standing or special committees? Hearing none. We will now look at our public forum. Madam Kirk, do we have anybody standing to speak?
I think we have four, sir. The first one is Brian Hayden, followed by Sue Ellen Waybride.
Public forum is Noah. Mr. Heath, which item of the agenda item are you speaking about tonight?
Number five will be covered. Number three will be covered. And Robert's Rules of Order in general. I choose my words carefully this evening because I've already been threatened with arrest and have been ejected by the chair of these proceedings. Germane two, body of this council. One item was amended, the minutes. I agree with that. Ms. Mary Go did not speak past four minutes. She was interrupted fifty-two seconds before the council reflected. I also believe that should be amended to reflect that the motion to adjourn from that meeting was not properly made. It is considered a polite violation of Robert's Rules of Order to interrupt a speaker. Or attempt to speak without being recognized. Now, there are a few exceptions where a member can interrupt a speaker, such as when raising a point of order, a point of information, or a point of personal privilege. Councilperson Cool did raise a point of order. However, they did not follow through with the point of order. The chair did not roll on a point of order. That councilperson jumped protocol and immediately made a motion to adjourn. Making a motion during a speaker's presentation is not proper protocol for Robert's Rules of Order. The minutes should reflect that this was not a properly adjourned meeting. From the minutes of April fifteenth, it is noted that there is a verbatim account of the chair's opening proclamation about Robert's Rules of Order and decorum in this chamber. I question that there is a conspicuous absence of the mayor's deplorable advocacy for extrajudicial capital punishment. Tonight, as in the past, the chair has stated that public forum is governed by Robert's Rules of Order. I have begun a concerted effort to study Robert's Rules of Order. It is an incredibly brave topic, but I am making sure that I am fully aware of what Robert's Rules of Order. So when I speak in front of you, not only do I speak with an authority of the truth, but I speak in an appropriate manner and follow decorum. What I have learned from studying Robert's Rules of Order is that there is such a thing called the Dunning Kruger effect. And if you don't know what that is, look it up because it abounds in this chamber. For Roman numeral seven, resolutions, number two, the attached email, as council representative or councilperson Cool said, is included, or maybe not that resolution. But the pay resis- revisions, I have severe problem with and question why, on a government email, are councilpersons using personal email addresses? They're listed right there. I thought we had a government contracted IT department that kept our records for records protection as well as public accountability, and we have a policy against the first use of personal emails for official government business. And with that, that's all I got.
Next, we have Ms. Waybride, followed by Mr. Bauer.
Ms. Waybride, which agenda item are you speaking about tonight?
Agenda item five. Put it up a little bit. Pull it up just a little bit. There you go. Thank you. One more time. Forgot, you're not counting my timing.
That's good. Let's start with you. Go ahead.
I am here and I talk about the positions, position classification, classification status, particularly grade H seven, MEO sanitation department, degree H seven A, and the street department under the agenda five. And by the way, I can put these on the agenda. Since you have open positions in both areas, I was able to review the job descriptions of each. Other than a different class and commercial driver sources required, I do not see a significant difference in responsibilities, duties, and capabilities between these two grades of employees. I'm going to keep my discussion focused using the proposed minimum hourly rate as described in the attachments to the agenda. The sanitation workers' minimum hourly rate proposed is thirteen dollars and fifty-five cents. The street department workers is fourteen oh eight. Even though neither one of these proposed rates are actually at the living wage, why is there a fifty percent difference between the two departments on their essential receiving? You have had open positions for sanitation workers close to twenty-five since November of twenty twenty-three. You are so understaffed that it has become a regular practice, either trash or recycling or both, have been canceled almost on a daily basis. Why can't you understand that employees cannot work in these dangerous positions, often on twelve-hour shifts with these critical wages? Rents are up, utilities and food have skyrocketed. If they earn more in a safe environment, working in a fast food restaurant, why would they continue working for this sake? I keep hearing that you cannot raise the sanitation workers' pay because they are paid out of a separate fund. You are raising sanitation rates by four dollars per month per household starting July first. Quoting Harry Giles at a budget meeting, this will generate about five hundred thousand dollars for that fund. I don't mind paying a dollar more a week to have consistent, reliable, and trash and recycling rate. If you raise the minimum hourly rate for both H seven and H seven A to a minimum fifteen dollars per hour, it is not comparable to the private companies that start workers at twenty-two dollars an hour, but it would be an improvement. And it will help both the employees and the general public to bridge a gap on these service expenses. You have an opportunity tonight to either amend this ordinance or send it back to the committee for a rewrite. Do the right thing by your employees and partners, your residents. Thank you.
Next, we have Russ Bauer, Twenty-Ninth Street, followed by Mary Go, Oak Street.
Hi, Mr. Bauer.
Hello.
Which agenda item are you here to speak about tonight?
I'm going to talk about item five, the classification compensation pay plan.
Excellent.
Just to let you know, I am a retired human resources director. I worked about twenty-four years in human resources. I have a master's degree and certification as an SBHR in human resource management. A couple of discrepancies I see. First of all, I think it's great that you're giving a four-point-two percent pay raise across the board. However, the documentation only says for part-time and civil service positions, it doesn't say for any full-time positions. So I'm sure that's just an oversight that will be corrected. Also, I looked at the classification of pay plan. I did not even see line item four, sanitation workers. I do also notice that there's not a line item for the homeless outreach coordinator in the pay plan as well. Obviously, there should be for both of these positions. And the other thing I'm concerned about is the motor equipment operator medium position has two different pay grades, and one for sanitation and one for two other departments. And I have written literally probably ten or twelve, or revised ten or twelve pay plans over my career. And if it's an MEO position that requires a CDL, then it should be the same pay plan paid for regardless of what their duties are, because you're paying them for their credentials of having a CDL and high school diploma or whatever other requirements you have. So to distinguish between sanitation CDL or MEO and the other MEO is incorrect based on my knowledge and experience. And I did work, by the way, for Palm Beach County Government and the state of West Virginia during my career. Those are big concerns. I also think that the whole pay range for the elderly workers is grossly low. I don't know if it's because of COVID and you haven't increased it periodically or whatever, but the way I always did it when I wrote the pay plan is build in a cost of living raise every year, and we'd go to our board of directors or whoever it was I reported to and say, this year we'd like to increase across the board, pay two percent, three percent, four percent, or whatever. And clearly, that hasn't been done because the pay ranges are pretty low. And I'm kind of embarrassed to be a resident of Parkersburg with some of these pay rates as low as they are. The, what I would suggest is that you do, and I know one was done several years ago, a new salary survey across the state and update everything and get it in order. Make sure that these job titles have pay ranges accordingly with the title. I understand that the MEO position is the goal for some of these sanitation workers. However, I'm concerned that the current sanitation workers that don't have the CDL...
Mr. Bauer, you've reached your four-minute limit, but after the meeting, if you'll see the clerk, I'll ask her to give you my phone number, and we'll try to give you to the right departments that get some answers to your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last one we have is Mary Go of Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Which agenda item are you here to talk about?
I am speaking on agenda item six, a message from the executive. So, good evening, members of the council, our city leadership, and all of my fellow neighbors that have shown up again. My name is Mary Go, I'm a District Eight community member. I rise tonight to speak on agenda item six, the message from the executive. That is the space where words carry weight, and the tone matters as much as content, and specifically regarding the statements made at the last meeting held on April fifteenth. As residents, we listen closely when our leaders speak because words matter. We reveal intentions. Watch your thoughts, or they become words. Watch your words, or they become actions. That wisdom reminds us, everything we say and do begins with what we believe, and these actions will define the character of this city. We cannot afford rhetoric rooted in hatred or actions driven by retaliation. It erodes trust, damages morale, and it will drive good people away. That is not my vision for Parkersburg. If our thoughts are grounded in compassion, our words will reflect care. And if our words reflect community, our actions will build community. Let us lead with kindness and speak with care. And remember that every seat of power carries the responsibility to serve. That includes showing up with accountability, especially when we fall short. So the reason why rivers and seas receive the homage of a hundred mountain streams is that they keep below them. Thus, they are able to reign over all the mountain streams. So the sage, wishing to be above men, puteth himself below them. Wishing to be before them, he puteth himself behind them. Thus, though his place be above men, they do not feel his weight. Though his place be before them, they do not count it as an injury. Public service is a very noble calling. I've said it before, it is not easy. You guys deserve appreciation. There is strength in leading with grace, and there is responsibility in holding a microphone because the words spoken into it reflect our leaders' thoughts. That's why the message from the executive matters. It's not just a formality, it will set the tone. It reflects not just policy, but posture. The posture of a leader comes with the expectation that they honor the best of our values: kindness, respect, and courage. When leaders choose kindness and collaboration, we all rise together. One of my heroes, Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, said, "Fight for the things that you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you," such as hosting a meeting with one hundred interested volunteers. I care about Parkersburg, and I would like to see it thrive for generations. When I speak out, I do so to feel something better and to be a positive force of change. She also said, "Speak your mind, even if your voice shakes." And that is what I am doing. I am speaking despite fear because I know I am not alone, and I will continue to speak for those that are still gathering their courage. It is easy to give in to outrage, but I believe I am called to be better. I will continue to advocate for leaders who choose encouragement and uplift and who stand behind their community so others can shine. I speak to contribute because I believe in Parkersburg. I believe we can be a stronger, safer, more inclusive city, and I believe in the wisdom, heart, and the integrity of our people that are concerned about our city. Thank you so much for allowing me this time to speak and for hearing not only my words, but the hopes and values that come from behind them. Thank you.
That's all we have, sir.
Thank you very quickly. At this time, we will close our public forum and move on to message from the executive. May I have a quick take tonight?
Yeah, I currently agree. One thing that I do want to point out with the first step, and I think several of you are aware of this, but I believe this makes the need to write consecutive here that this council has approved the budget with the cost of living investment for this being July first, so possibly just for all employees across the board. I want to talk briefly about the item with regards to residency tonight for our fire department. I made a comment to one of you earlier today. I don't have a lot of strong feelings about this particular legislation, but I do have very strong feelings that, and trust and respect for Chief Matthews. And, you know, you look at all the improvements that we've realized in our fire department over his ten years, Chief?
Close to it, yeah.
Close to it. You know, we've had two improvements in our IRS ISO ratings. You know, he's done a lot of work with regards to fire stations, not just designing the first two replacements, but also relocating the most recent current under construction fire station to improve the fireworks wants to, I'm going to get along, I want to say about nine hundred residents. So I've had a handful of folks say, why would you want to let your, you know, I think he addressed that, he may have received some of those questions again tonight, but I just want to say, I don't want anybody to think I don't care about this legislation. I care about it. But more importantly, I just want to, you know, Chief Matthews is responsible for running our fire department, and ran it extremely well for, let's say, going on ten years. And I was supportive of this when he first brought it to me, four, five months down, because it feels better to staff manage, run the day-to-day operations of our fire department, make those decisions than Chief Matthews. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is that appropriate? Yes, communication?
I do. We have communication from Mayor Tom Joyce nominating Mr. Zach Stanley, Twenty-Six Lordbrook Drive, as a member of the Municipal Planning Commission for term to expire remaining thirteen to twenty twenty-eight.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Move to accept the nomination, Mr. Stanley?
Second.
We have a motion in second to confirm. Are there any questions from council? Hearing none, Madam Kirk, the vote, please?
Mr. McCrady?
Yes.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Mr. Zach Stanley is going to be on the Municipal Planning Commission. Resolution carries. Resolution number two, please.
A resolution requesting approval of a budget revision in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of awarding the spring twenty twenty-five paving contract. Mr. President?
Ms. Cool?
Move for adoption of the resolution?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions from council? Hearing none, Madam Kirk, the vote, please?
Mr. McCrady?
Yes.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, resolution passes. Number three, please.
A resolution amending the rules and regulations of the Parkersburg Fire Department, Chapter Ten, Eligibility for Appointments, Section One oh 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 point one two. Members of the Parkersburg Fire Department shall maintain a full-time residence within a ninety-minute drive time from the Parkersburg Municipal Building, One Government Square. Mr. President?
Ms. Cool?
Move for adoption of the resolution?
Second. We have a motion and a second on number three. Are there any questions from council? Hearing none, Madam Kirk, the vote, please?
Mr. McCrady?
Yes.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Resolution passes. Ordinance on first reading, please.
An ordinance amending Article thirteen fifty-eight oh nine, private outdoor designated areas, to extend the time to be all year round, and Article thirteen fifty-eight oh two, definitions, and thirteen fifty-eight oh four, dissipation.
Mr. President? Ms. Cool?
Move for adoption of the ordinance on final reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions from council? Hearing none, Madam Kirk, the vote, please?
Mr. McCrady?
Yes.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, ordinance passes on the final reading. An ordinance amending and reenacting the classification and compensation plan for
the city of Parkersburg, Table One, part-time hourly positions, and Table Three, civil service non-executive position classifications. Mr. President?
Ms. Cool?
Move for adoption of the ordinance on first reading?
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions from council?
Mr. President?
Ms. Tuck?
I believe a question was raised about these positions, and as we know, these are part-time hourly positions and typical three civil service. I believe this grade went into effect for the other positions at a different time. This is just for this particular, let me out here, this is just for part-time hourly and to bring everybody, the whole, that whole stack, is that correct?
Yes.
Could you explain that just a little more clearly?
So, the way that civil service works is that theirs have to be approved by ordinance versus where for the civilians, that was approved during the budget process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council on the first reading, Madam Kirk? Hearing none, Madam Kirk, the vote, please?
Mr. McCrady?
Yes.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, ordinance passes on first reading. Item number six, please.
An ordinance amending and reenacting the City of Parkersburg Policy and Procedure Manual, Section Nine, Subsection C, Safe Time Payout Program. Mr. President?
Ms. Cool?
Move for adoption of the ordinance on first reading?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions from council?
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions from council? Hearing none, I have a question. I'm not sure to direct this to, but probably our, our HR, the lady Jennifer. Um, so can an officer of twenty years retire and pull set crew time at fifty percent pay? I know there's limits. I know there's, I think there's officers under the old plan, right?
Correct. Yes. So if you're under the whole retirement plan, you cannot use your sick time to count towards the service, which is an option that civilians can do under the consolidated public retirement report. So this would give them an opportunity to utilize that sick time because if they choose not to put it towards the cost of their health insurance benefits, then they would simply lose those accrued hours of sick time when they retire. So this would give them a way to use that one.
So we're, we're actually adding a benefit.
Correct, yes.
To, so would they be able to take those accrued hours and cash them in at fifty percent value if they're on the old plan?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else on council have questions? Thank you. Madam Clerk, I guess we're ready for the bid call.
Okay. Mr. McCready.
Yes.
Ms. Cool.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
Ms. Tuck, yes. Mr. Rexrode.
Yes.
And Mr. Vorkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Daley.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, ordinance passes on the first reading. Number seven, please.
An ordinance amending and reenacting the City of Parkersburg Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual, Position Classification Set. Mr. President.
Mrs. Cool.
Move for adoption of the ordinance on first reading.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions from council on item number seven?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Tuck.
Um, I have a couple. Um, I was just, um, if, could you clarify? If this is reenacting the personnel policy and procedure or if it is reenacting a classification and compensation plan, is that the same thing?
So, so item seven is the inspector, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So currently, we do not have a pay range for a civilian firefighter. Those of you that were here a couple of weekends last summer, Chief Jennifer, I'm now.
Yes, yes, correct.
We crafted, uh, an ordinance, passed an ordinance that allowed for the first, uh, this position of inspector to be offered to, uh, available to a sworn firefighter. Chief, is that the proper vernacular? A sworn firefighter, uh, firefighter, um, with council enacted some guardrails with regards to, it's a Monday through Friday, this forty-hour week day job, um, you know, I won't get into all the detail, but there were a lot of, a lot of confusion, a lot of consternation with regards to the way Chief Matthews managed that particular position within the department. So, as he stated, first company meeting a couple of weeks ago, there were no current eligible folks, active firefighters that wanted to, uh, to show the interest in the job. And so if we're going to open up civilians, we got to have, it's got to have a hole in a line item of them. It's got to be in a pay. And with regards to a sworn civil service firefighter, uniform division, that was outlined in ordinance and it was prorated based on your rank. Mr. Myers was clever, I guess, and to make sure that, that there was protection should a lieutenant go back and come in and take the job that got paid a lieutenant's prorated day rate. And then if they wanted to leave that position, they could actually, they'd still be on the same thing, I think. So all this, number seven does is you're, you're approving a pay range which is about.
H twelve.
H twelve. That's where this job goes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I, I guess I was just asking if that is a part of the Personnel Policy and Procedure or that comes from the, the Classification Compensation Plan that was in the.
The, the Classification Plan is a part of the Policy and Procedure Manual.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, the other question I had, if I may ask.
Oh, you had, you had too. I was just trying to say.
Um, so I guess my question was, is this, um, is this the, um, the, the, is this the bargaining pay raise? I know there's a range, but is it just a higher, can it be changed at any other time other than that higher?
So the way we have it set up is that every position has a minimum hourly rate. And then obviously, if you see the minimum hourly rate in the salary format, which is two thousand eighty hours, that's going to be your minimum salary amount that's listed there. So the position can be, as long as the position is within that range. So if somebody comes in and they have an exceptional amount of certifications or something like that, because of the range, you can't operate above the minimum hourly rate. It's just that's the base threshold.
Correct. And then can, can that be changed once the person is employed? Can you switch to a higher range and it'll, I, I guess I'm trying to see this, this, does, my phrase is, um, yeah, so if a person is hired at that rate and then six months into it, you see they're doing a fantastic job, can you bump it up to a higher rate or is that, is that done during budget process?
That was typically during the budget process.
Any other questions on item number seven? Counselor, thank you. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, the vote, please.
Mr. McCready.
Yes.
Ms. Cool.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Tuck, yes. Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode.
Yes.
Mr. Vorkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Daley.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, ordinance passes on the first reading. We have a motion to adjourn. Hey, we are adjourned, our, uh, May twenty-seventh, we have a URA meeting. And our next council meeting will be May twenty-seventh.